I'd like to call the September Senate Court Council meeting for the Boro Mechanics Program to order. We will begin with a pledge to the flag of our land under the sun. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, with its stand, one nation, united in its glory and with liberty and peace and honor. Thank you. Wrong call.
President.
Yes.
President.
Yes.
Councilor Niggers. Here. Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilman Fisher.
Yes.
Councilman Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Ritter.
Yes.
Anthony Rudolphski.
Yes.
Lieutenant Carter.
Yes.
E O C Wardle.
Yes.
We have Scott. Oh, Mr. Kuzmic.
Yes.
Apology. We have Scott.
Thank you. All right, um, I know we do have a guest this evening.
Yes.
Are there any other guests other than the one listed on the... None of them aware of us, sir. All right, so we've, uh, at this time called David Barlow from Enterprise Fleet Management up to the podium, and the floor is yours, sir.
All right, good afternoon and evening, everybody. As you said, I'm David Barlow, I'm with Enterprise Fleet Management, I'm an account executive with them. Um, and my sole purpose is to work with all the different entities, the government entities, uh, with fleet of vehicles and on the commercial side and the government side. Um, and I've had the privilege of working with Roger now, uh, to identify some key targets of your fleet and see kinda where we might be able to best be efficient to maybe shrinking some of the expenses and doing a little bit more with a, a little bit less type mentality. Um, we've had two in-person meetings now and we've probably spent countless hours of data gathering what your fleet are, your, your aftermarket equipment, let's be honest, with the police vehicles. And we've taken that twenty-one slide deck and put it into four for you tonight. So I'm gonna highlight just a few things and hopefully leave open some questions that you guys might have, uh, and just concerns and things I might be able to address tonight. And if maybe not all answers, uh, can be given tonight, maybe a little bit later. So I think you passed everything out, everyone has, uh, sheet there in front of you. So really the full synopsis we want to take a peek at and the situation at hand is if you kinda read through that with me. Twenty-nine percent of your vehicles are about ten years old. Uh, sixty-seven percent of them are about six years older with an average age of your fleet at about nine years to ten years old. Um, older vehicles we've found have higher fuel costs, more expensive maintenance, you have the downtime, which is less productive, which ends up kinda shrinking some money into those vehicles. So the objective that we've been able to look at with identifying the twenty-one vehicles in fleet, including the police first vehicles, is really looking at a game plan of not just a kinda in-the-moment game plan, but what does that look like at a sustained cost over ten years? Um, so we propose a, 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 a savings for you guys and looking at things in a very, very conservative nature. Um, and just kinda keeping all the, not to ride the COVID wave of how high resale is right now, but just keeping it very conservative, but what it has been here in the, in the past. Um, we're looking at about two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-thirteen dollars in savings, uh, with implementing the enterprise, uh, plan with what Roger and I have talked about over ten years. Um, so we were able to shorten a thirteen-year life cycle down to a five-year life cycle. And when you change that life cycle, you're able to lower the sustainable cost of the fleet and you're able to start doing a lot more predictive, uh, nature with your maintenance costs and your fuel costs. And when you continue to go down that path of taking that thirteen-year to five-year cycle, you're gonna end first year, uh, for about eight thousand dollars of capital, um, savings on just eight of those vehicles. They're not really worth a ton, but there's still some, some funds left in there, so we have a free up at eight thousand. And some of the big hitting numbers again of taking your fleet from thirteen to five years old, uh, you're gonna see an average sustainable savings of about forty-five dollars in maintenance cost versus right now you're s- you're spending about two-hundred-and-twelve dollars per unit in maintenance costs. Um, so just continuing to go forward with that, you know, being able to reduce the spend, having newer vehicles on the road. Once we get to that completely cycled and phased out process, you're gonna continue to see about eight thousand dollars in fuel savings across the board every year as well. Really for just being able to leverage what we consider to do for our government is the open-ended lease. It's allowing you to le- utilize your government buy. Um, we're able to get that in there at that price for what you guys are purchasing your vehicles at. You're able to maintain the equity in that fleet and you get back the equity at the end of that, uh, do resale. So Enterprise doesn't keep that money, we put that right back into your program and into the fleet and allow you then to lower your lease payment and/or put more vehicles on the road. If you look at the increased employee safety, I don't have that quantified in page three, but if you're looking at right now, about five of your vehicles don't have the anti-lock break systems. They're about two-thousand-and-seven older. Six of your vehicles, uh, predate the electronic stability control stabilization, thorough control vehicles are when you're traveling if you need to brake or if you need to have that situation take place. Lower accidents with that. And about seventeen of your vehicles currently predate the standardization that we have right now with backup cameras. And we know that the backup cameras can significantly lower, uh, your accidents across the board. So those are some data facts that I don't have a number for because you guys would know how often there are fender benders in there. Uh, but there's some just key features about the age of your fleet with what we're doing. And I'm not saying that any of the, that your vehicles are unsafe, it's just the data and the facts of the age of the vehicles is where they're at. Um, you know, but what we've been able to do with piggybacking through the source file and verdict, Enterprise has been deemed as the number one fleet service for all of our government entities across the United States. Uh, we've been able to receive that contract through our practices of our customer service and partnering with you guys and other entities like yourselves. So the results are pretty simple, I'm not gonna jump into page four and break down that whole entire spreadsheet tonight. Um, but just from looking at partnering with Enterprise Fleet Management, uh, the Boro will be better able to leverage its buying power. Uh, implement tighter controllers and resale programs to lower your costs of ownership. Um, in turn, you're gonna be able to minimize your operational spend. Uh, Mechanics Per Boro will be able to reduce their fuel costs by twenty-seven percent. Uh, you'll be able to reduce your maintenance spend again from two-hundred-and-twelve dollars per vehicle right now, down to forty-five dollars and ninety-three cents per vehicle. Uh, you'll be able to leverage again the open-ended lease to maximize your cash flow, be able to do more with less. Uh, and then the vehicle sale creating internal replacement fund. And at third year, the Cash Per Boro will, uh, be able to leverage Enterprise, uh, our management, uh, ability to just sell your vehicles. Right now, we're able to sell government vehicles about a hundred-and-seventeen percent above the black book value, uh, which is bringing way more dollars in sanction than currently holding a truck for thirteen years or until death, uh, which would put some good money back on the table for you guys now to put back into your fleet. Uh, and then by shifting from a, you know, reactive replacing a non-operable vehicle to proactively planning with vehicles that are still learning and doing well, um, you guys will be able to replace all of your fleet over the course of five years. Uh, and then even after ten years, continue to see a twenty-one thousand dollar sustained savings, uh, with Enterprise managing one of your fleet. And it'll put a ton of time back on the table, allowing Roger to spend less time focused on the fleet and more time focused on the fleet. Uh, and then increase tremendous amount of savings across the board. Page three, this is a breakdown of your fleet. Um, it shares with you guys kinda the average age of your fleet, a lot of the data that we were able to collect and work on and put into place for you guys to see tonight. The second part of that is the ten-year program broken down year after year of showing you guys how that works. And again, not to jump into that, that just brings things down to where I got that ten-year savings of two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. And that average sustainable savings over the next, uh, past the ten years, about twenty-one thousand nine, nine, you know, nine-hundred-and-thirty. Um, again, just going to page four, uh, again, safety, sixty-seven percent of all of your vehicles are older than that six-year mark, which is gonna allow a lot more, uh, safety features on the table. And then really Enterprise in partnering with, uh, the Boro, uh, will bring, um, the whole entire account management team on board for you. They'll have our whole entire infrastructure of, you know, where you wanna take your cars in maintenance, the oversight, the websites that we do for you of consolidating your invoices, your maintenance utilization, registration, new registrations, and your life cycles is all free to you. You have no additional cost for our website and our features. Um, and allowing you to be able to have everything in one consolidated spot, managing your fleet, uh, through that website, uh, do that. And then page five is really just showing our current partners that Roger was able to reach out to a few. Some of those partners are already invested with us for four or five years and seeing the complete ten-year cycle already in place and they're five years completely complacent. Uh, and then I just wanted to open up the floor again, sorry for talking maybe too fast for you here or not fast enough, uh, for any questions that you have. Cause I just covered a, a lot of data, um, with what you guys are currently doing with your fleet, what we're proposing on the table. I know there were possible questions about aftermarket and...
There were, yeah, there were people. Yeah, Chief and, uh, and, uh, some of the highway guys expressed concerns about, uh, outfit. David, if you could speak to that.
Okay. So if you look at the ten-year model on page three, it's small for an I4G, but the two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars of savings over ten years does take into account the cost of what it would be to outfit your vehicles. You've got a lot of dump bodies and heavy-duty plow equipment. And then the police vehicles being one-hundred percent outfitted with all the bells and whistles that they need to put in their vehicles, for lack of better words, um, is already accounted for and planned into this process. So there's no hidden, you know, I would say costs involved there. What it would look like to outfit a police vehicle, to keep it very short and simple, um, the chief of police would let me know everything that he needs in that vehicle. We would sit down, we would build that car together, uh, of all the equipment, the radios, the, the holsters, the cages, the lights, where he wants the placement. And then that vehicle then would be going to production and be built. Now, no vehicle will ever be replaced until it's been checked and vetted when it comes to him. And then he'll be able to then show this vehicle's operating, it's work, it's to my stature, shall I like it? And then we would take the old vehicle away and then decommission that, um, and make sure that all of that equipment then goes to the right authorities and places, uh, so that it wouldn't be a part of resale. Uh, so it's short and sweet from suits to nuts, you know, you're looking at, we handle everything from the start to the finish. And all the chief of police has to do at that point is just sign on the dotted line and say, I will receive this vehicle and you can now take this other vehicle. Um, your aftermarket equipment works the same way. Uh, if you need to outfit a dump body, we sit down, Roger and I, we get everything to spec the way, exactly the way you guys want it, to the equipment that you need. We'll probably make some recommendations on maybe the type of vehicle, the cost savings involved in that type of vehicle. But from that point, we then put that vehicle into production. Once that vehicle is built and made, same thing, it comes to you. And once you guys check off on that vehicle being done exactly the way you like it, we'll take that and we replace that vehicle, take that other vehicle for you and we go and resell that vehicle. And then you recoup the benefit of that resale, it comes back into you and you can put that back into your plan. So at no point would you have to spend the energy of figuring everything out, then talking to the aftermarket folks, then go and do that whole process, waiting to see when it's done, when, you know, it's out of production and all that. Everything is handled off for you, turnkey.
So I guess the question I was asking is firstly, some of the equipment that we switch from police vehicle to police vehicle is using the same, so we wouldn't be able to do that.
So you can still do that. So, so some of our folks, different Boro's, wanna have more of a hands-on, Dave, I, I wanna keep this equipment and use it for this car. So then we would sit down and spec that out together and figure out, okay, what do you guys wanna keep, what you don't wanna keep? A lot of this, sorry.
So, so the question, you know, you're saying we'd be able to drive and be able to use it and then decide if we, we wanna keep it. But if we're trading equipment, we wouldn't be able to do it because it's already in the new vehicle.
Yeah, so we can have it built exactly the way you want it. So if you're gonna be using and swapping radios yourself and putting the hours in to do that, then you can do that.
Right, now, we have a, someone that puts it in, uh, on a professional side, things for outfit of the radios, the cameras. But the, the camera moves from one vehicle to the next, we don't purchase a new, a brand new camera each time or a brand new laptop or a brand new...
Correct.
So some of that stuff goes in, so that puts us out of service into that vehicle.
Okay. So then you, we wouldn't collect that other vehicle until all that stuff would be moved over. So you would be able to then take the, the new vehicle, right? We would go to the aftermarket person that you're currently using to keep things locally. And then once all that stuff is done and you're done, you know, decommissioning that one vehicle and putting everything into your new vehicle, that's when we would take that vehicle to resale and you would then operate your current police vehicle.
Correct. So I understand, I mean, you were saying that we would drive it first before we decided whether we'd wanna keep it, but because of the switches, you know, something I'm saying is like that one vehicle actually be out of service until that vehicle would come online and then we're kinda with that unless we switch things back then again, you see what I'm saying?
Well, right, right, so what, what I mean when, when you get that is just to keep it as simple as possible. We won't take away any vehicles until then. But so if you get the vehicle, you'll know right away whether you want to keep it or not. Traditionally, it, it'll be performing or all the specs that you would have were for it that way. And then obviously you would then take that at the time, get your stuff swapped over and then we would collect and move. So you still have a decision to make in that moment. There's plenty of folks that would take first dibs at a police vehicle that's already ready to go with a few things added to it. So you're not stuck with that until you make that final decision, of course. Um, but we, we keep it pretty simple. There's no, it's, it's, this is meant to be a partnership, not a, not a, hey, you're stuck with us now because you didn't wanna change a few features. Um, so we can, we can definitely iron out whichever way you would want that to look and, and work out for sure. That help answer your question?
Yeah, I'm gonna take that, look, I send it on, so...
Yeah, different process, yeah. And then some things you might wanna look into as well, again, we haven't, we, you know, talked a little bit with the police department, everyone that Roger and I have been to do, but yes, we're looking at that in two years.
I'm talking to Chief Gonsalves, was I watching that one, sir?
Right, so that would be next one of the next steps. But one of these you gotta take into consideration too is how many man-hours are going into decommissioning these? Is the cost worth keeping this equipment versus putting on new equipment? Is it more effective to run that vehicle? And we would run that analysis for you is what I'm saying. It definitely makes sense to wait that long to put that equipment back in those vehicle and then reutilize it. It actually is cost-efficient to move forward, so we would, we would vet that out for you too. So a lot of times with, like the Boro of Gettysburg, we, they looked at doing swap. It actually costs effectively, it makes sense to take that time, pay for someone to do all that equipment for you when it's already coming, ready to go the way that it is. It's just a decommission and move on. So again, we try to make the best thing, like the best cost of savings for you and then you guys can make the decision if you wanted to take that route or not. So that'd be on the table for you guys to consider as well.
What's your average time from order to delivery, associating now with the hand-drawn looking related, um, supply chain issues?
Yeah, so that's obviously something that's going on right now, you know, if we would, we would create apples for apples, you know, you're looking at a four to six week out, you know, and that factory or vehicle the way that you want it. And then some of the aftermarket is gonna be another six weeks, right? So it's really sitting down and figuring out, we're ready for the right vehicle for you in that time, what's still available, what's still open right now, cause of early shutdowns and shipshirts, just not, everything is still open. So your window of opportunity really comes down to what's still available, what can we have built in that? So our, our, our return times is, is utilizing the same infrastructure that you guys are utilizing, just managing that process for you. So right now, with some of the vehicles in fleet, you're about five months out if you're getting dump bodies and everything put on. So if you're making decisions today about what you might need to be doing in the future, being proactive is super important versus waiting until we're down a vehicle or two and not able to get those vehicles ordered in. So the, the timing of them being built isn't really any different than, you know, you saying, hey, I need to order this truck. What we like to try to do is know that in advance, you know, and saying, hey, this year we're coming up on this budget year. These are the vehicles that we already have targeted, this is what needs to be done. And so now you're ordering early and sooner in that year. So you're receiving those vehicles a little bit sooner than you probably would in the past with more of a knee-jerk reaction of, hey, this is really in bad shape, now we should consider it. We're kind of already proactively planning for that process to then be on the cycle. So it helps shrink that window of time down a lot.
I understand. I need to ask you real quick.
Yes, sir.
I know you said that you wanted to kinda go past this, and by the way, you did a good job, thank you for our...
I'm gonna go for it, I'm, thank you.
I'm a little nervous, guys, so I was wondering if you could explain to me the chart that's about third of page three. So, uh, I'm, I'm the release of vehicle, uh, so if you could kinda give me the third bigger version, that'd be great.
I can, so I'm, I'm happy to geek out as much as you guys need me to, I love this stuff. Um, so to keep it simple, um, what you're looking at in, in leasing that vehicle versus, you know, purchasing, is that the question at hand?
So I'm just gonna write across the chart there, indicates that, uh, in our current situation with twenty-one vehicles, you're looking at reducing it to twenty.
Yes, and that, that was just based on utilization. So to come in, we looked at that and showed where there is one vehicle that is just really not being used. So we're not the type of company that comes and says, hey, order, order, order more, it's why, why are we using this vehicle? So there was a specific need for that. And when we talked, we might be able to change out a vehicle to kinda replace you faster versus just one-side it. So run across the top of the line and I'll, I'll go as quick and simple as possible. Um, the twenty-one vehicles, we saw one vehicle's underutilized, we can still sell twenty-one, but we recommend it twenty based on just some of the numbers. Um, that's the next line down is that thirteen-year cycle, based on the miles of your vehicles, all the things and makes that you shared with me. The average, uh, miles that you guys are doing in a smaller type, uh, community is about six thousand two hundred a year on average across those vehicles. So that's where we...
I'm sorry, I heard you lost you, I was...
Uh, just, just go right across, uh, from current cycle thirteen point thirteen to annual miles right next to the right of that.
Green. Oh, okay, I, I was a little lost for a little.
They're, they're still on the ground, just explaining where the numbers are coming from. So that annual mileage is sixty-two hundred, and then that's where we scroll to the right, again, that's where I got the proposed five-year cycle. If you scroll down, then down that same grid, the current maintenance that you guys are spending, that two-hundred-and-twelve, do you see that number there?
Yes.
So if you look at the proposed maintenance cost, it's forty-five dollars.
Correct.
And we go down one more, uh, the maintenance cents per mile, we broke everything down, cents per miles for the car, so that you have a better understanding of what that car costs per mile. Uh, your average per mile is ten da- uh, miles per gallon, based on some of those bigger three-fifty bodies and some of those different trucks that you guys have, those five-fifty chassis, uh, just, you're significantly lower. And they're being thirteen years old, they're not getting what they used to get when they were first fresh off the line. So your average miles based on what you shared with me, your data, uh, is about ten miles per gallon per vehicle, at about three thousand twenty-five cents per gallon. Obviously, we know you don't pay the taxes on the gas and you get the gas a little cheaper. Scroll down again, that gold bar is your standard. So that was what we were able to see over the past, backdating the, the two years of data collecting on your cost. Uh, that gold bar became the average typically, you typically purchase one-point-six vehicles every year. You own twenty-one vehicles. Uh, fifty thou- uh, fifty-four thousand is the, the purchase on average, cause you're holding it for thirteen years, so that we broke that down. Even though you might be spending a hundred thousand for this, something this season, on average, that breaks down about fifty-four thousand dollars every one-point-six years.
Every one-point-six years.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And then that gold bar across the top is your number still, uh, fifty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars in maintenance.
Is that in one-point-six years or one year?
So that's just broken down on your actual maintenance cost per year.
Per year.
Yeah. You're, you're purchasing your, a vehicle at one-point-six vehicles per year.
Yeah.
Right? So you're, you're looking at your maintenance costs over the past year, and year and year and year, the average of that in the past several years has been fifty-three thousand for those vehicles. Which brings you at the age of the vehicle, the miles of the vehicle, you're at about forty thousand dollars, okay, in your spend for fuel. Based on that. That gives you an all-in fleet budget, a very conservative approach for you of what your numbers are year over year, looking at the big span of time of about a hundred-and-forty-seven thousand.
So...
And that's capitalized budget and your operating from budget now coming together.
Okay. So fifty-four thousand, thirty dollars under the purchase line is a one-point-six year, okay?
Yeah, so that's based on one-point-six vehicles per year.
One-point-six vehicles per year.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so, so twenty-one, you're leased, most of our control unit was on the street or on lease?
Right, so this is the, the three to twenty-one that you shared with me.
The lease, um, we would, they, we're purchasing them on, on a lease basis. It'd be the same thing as if we paid cash for them.
Right, I understand, so...
Okay.
Just wanna make sure you got that. Which one's the vehicle? Is that, which vehicle are you saying that it is under you loans?
Uh, it's actually, there's a, there was a problem with one of the VIN numbers and it was misidentified on the spreadsheets that was given to me. Uh, it's actually the, the back truck, it's a silver plant.
Okay.
So...
So that's why we came back to keep the twenty-one.
That's why it's got, what, I think it's a hundred-and-fifty miles a year.
Yeah, and it's just, as me, if that's a specialized vehicle, I'm not looking at trying to circle that out for you guys anytime soon because it just, it has sorts of purpose. Um, so that's kind of a, a runoff there. Um, but that will end up getting touched within five years of that cycle. So then just, again, if I wanna get, there's a hundred thousand numbers on this page, uh, so did you wanna jump into just, we'll jump into year twenty-two? And then I think I'll show you year twenty-six, just so the numbers kinda, cause your car is pleasant play. Um, so your first year, eight vehicles would be sold and then turn into a lease. That would leave you with twelve vehicles owned.
Correct.
So now you have an eight-lease vehicles.
Correct.
You're gonna lease those vehicles around fifty-five thousand, okay? And you're going to sell those other eight at about eight thousand five hundred conservatively, okay? If we would take them to market tomorrow, we know we, we get a way greater return. But again, that's not what we're here to show in flashy numbers, just on average what we've seen over time. Then if you scroll over, just by changing eight old vehicles out and putting eight new ones on the road, you're really only looking at six thousand five hundred miles a year. You're not even getting into more than an oil change. And possible, possible tire rotation, depending on how many of your guys are burning rubber. So then you look at your maintenance cost there, it's about thirty-four thousand. So significantly ten thousand dollars in all the savings within that first year of that change down the vehicles. And then that line continues. So with the government program, the cap-based standards, every year they have to have a better fuel efficiency than the current. Roger and I did talk a little bit about electric vehicles, we might have that conversation today, um, but just your fuel efficiency changes again. So then you're in an all-in fleet budget with your lease vehicles at a hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars your first year and not a hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, thousand dollars at that top. Do you see that one eighteen?
Yes.
Okay, so then you're looking at a net savings within your first year, twenty-nine thousand dollars back into your budget.
Gotcha.
And then that continues to fall and fall as you go down, right? So if we scroll down to, let's say, line twenty-six, you'll notice, oh, year twenty, twenty-six, um, you'll notice again, again, if we put that one vehicle back on the board, we can, but at twenty vehicles, uh, you're looking at three vehicles then being leased, you're looking at zero now vehicles owned. You're all-in with your, your process at twenty vehicles. Um, you're looking at a hundred-and-forty-five thousand then a sustainable lease payment across the board, right? But then that's where your, your resale of your current lease vehicles comes in the play. So if you scroll into your equity lease.
Sure.
That equity lease column represents in year twenty-six, a hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars of your first full implementation of now your lease vehicles being resold. And then that money comes back to you into that program, so you can recoup all of that.
Okay, can you, can you repeat that one?
Yeah, absolutely.
Look, we're there, and the answer says we roll each year, I thought that was...
Yeah, so you only had three vehicles left in your old fleet, so you were able to recoup twenty-five thousand five hundred on the conservative price paying. You also were able to then flip and recoup the cost of your leased vehicles, cause now we're taking those leased vehicles at five years to market for you.
Okay.
And that's about a hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars of equity that will be coming back into your program of those leased vehicles now being sold for you on our behalf for you.
Probably eight that we took, uh, five years prior and whatever else.
Yeah, so that first eight you started with.
Uh-huh.
Now, some of those, again, some of those is just a very conservative approach, those eight are then gonna be resold at the right time. We targeted, you know, how many miles are gonna be on them versus what you pay for them, and you take that line in consideration. We take it down to a reduced book value, so you're paying for what it's worth. Uh, through that course of that open equity, you spend a hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, comes back on the table. That twenty-six years, we're a big step ahead for your maintenance program because you're now dealing with all these vehicles and no more dinosaurs left in the fleet that are really nickel and dime you for those higher cost efficiency and maintenance processes. Uh, so you have a sustainable eleven thousand twenty-four there on out. Right, you see how that number just says you're staying there on out? Jump over to your fuel, and a lot of people say, well, how can you say you're only gonna be spending thirty-three thousand, two-hundred, fourteen dollars in fuel on average? But again, every year, you're gonna be dealing with new, efficient vehicles. We probably will be getting into electric vehicles year eight, nine, and ten, that's just kinda how the world is going. Uh, but you're gonna be able to see a sustained average savings across the board for that. That's where you get into your net cash category, if you scroll all the way into that net cash column. And that's where your actual fleet budget is one-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand. And just to stay on that net cash, since it's kind of a shame plug and play, you'll notice that some years you only have a fleet budget of three thousand eight hundred dollars. That's because you're selling those leased vehicles and you're taking that equity and you're rolling it back into your program. So instead of having a budget meeting of saying, I need a hundred thousand dollars this year, you're looking at a budget meeting of saying, well, this year with respect to the program, we sell these vehicles, we're looking at three thousand eight hundred dollars that we're gonna need this year to maintain and maintenance our vehicles that are leased vehicles, since we take everything to market and resell it. So it's a completely different way of thinking. Um, that's where, you know, with Flora Paxton Township, Columbia Boro, City of York, Boro of Gettysburg, a lot of them are fully implemented into their process now. And that's the type of return on investment and information that's going into their vehicles, they've just taken their current vehicles, sold them for them, and you guys take them that money that you've recouped now and put it back into your program.
Correct.
But I'd be happy to, you know, I don't wanna take up time tonight to continue to hash out numbers, but I'd be happy to meet with anyone and talk more details of, you know, what you're looking at with your program.
Thank you for that.
How would that impact our vehicle insurance with newer vehicles being used and more expensive ones? The safety factors on the new vehicles with the airbag...
The safety factors, all the new vehicles with the airbags, backup cameras and all that stuff, we actually should bring our insurance numbers down.
And probably get you a little bit more discounts because of that.
I know Chief is seeing that, uh, on her insurance side, with her replacement vehicle she's got, she's seeing that a little bit of a reduction. Not a whole lot, given the fact that there's other things that's raising it up, because we have a lots of problems. Uh, but as far as the vehicle, numbers are coming down, so. Uh, and that's, and one of the things is, we're having trouble getting vehicles, period. Buying them one, two, three at a time. Uh, she just got notification the day that her twenty-twenty-one that she ordered, I think it's February.
Yeah, February.
It is now available.
For pallets available.
Um, the two that I ordered in January, the two pickups, I ordered in January, canceled. And I got a proposal for twenty-twenty-twos that are ten thousand dollars a piece more than what the twenty-twenty-one for. Enterprise is buying, but millions of cars a year.
Yeah, I mean-
And they have more grind power than what we have, um, to, to get these vehicles quicker and get them here, so.
It, it's, it's real the plan.
Yeah.
It's, it's just having a plan, knowing what you're doing each year allows us to pull the trigger as soon as those order banks open, which then gets you first seat at the line, versus maybe having the last seat at the line and being told no. And then the next couple of years, you know, we're going to continue to deal with this COVID banking situation for a few years out. And having a plan in place has allowed other, you know, organizations that we work with in the government sectors to not be without vehicles. You take just a small number, about a hundred thousand dollars, you were able to, instead of just looking at two vehicles, you could have implemented eight new vehicles in that program and then been able to put money back into your program and not had to come up with that capitalized budget for just two. So there's just, just, it's a different philosophy of thinking, but it's a very conservative approach. I don't want to get too heavy with, with numbers and savings, it's, it's a very conservative approach in what we have, uh, presented for you because, again, we're working with a lot of the other government entities, you know, just multiple council meetings and sharing with them what we're able to do. Um, the focus is putting money back into the taxpayers' pockets, right? And you've been able to do more with less. Uh, and then improving safety and, and productivity of vehicles. We, we had a sidebar chat of, you know, we were, we were in regular cabs, and the resale value right now in regular cabs is like ten to fifteen percent lower than if you would have gotten a quad cab and then sold the quad cab at the same timeframe, you were running on a quad cab than a regular cab. And the incentives for you in your government program are even higher on a quad cab than a regular cab. But traditionally, we purchase the same vehicle year after year, you go that route, that's what we're used to doing. And again, you know, enterprise, you're leveraging our, our knowledge, our infrastructure to work for your benefit, and that's kind of what the partnership would look like.
Manager Sersky, did you say that this was a distilled report, like there was a larger report?
There was, I sent it out, okay. Yeah, that's the one, that's twenty-one pages.
That breaks down whether your maintenance program looks like, what all does that cover? You know, whether's a fuel program look like, what all does that cover? It, it gets really down into the nitty-gritty of all of the options we provide for our customers and clients, and I bore him to death with that presentation a couple times too, so.
I sent it out, uh, or sent it out maybe two weeks ago.
I remember that one. I was curious though, you know, if there was a breakdown of sort of twenty vehicles would be, like as a comparison to what we have now? Like sort of how we have our vehicles and what you broke down the future vehicles to be.
Did it basically match what we have now as far as the, as far as the trucks for the sewer plant and highway drive? Uh, and, and did, as far as what the chief provided me as far as the police department, matching what was on the, the current books, you know, the SUVs for the police department, uh, with a pickup truck thrown in there, uh, to replace the GMC. And then, instead of single cabs, the dual cabs for, uh, the three fifties for the park and the highway drive, along with the, uh, the, the new dump bed that we bought, the, the five fifty. Uh, they would have plows and a spreader on that truck.
Right.
The other trucks would all have plows on them. Uh, and then for the sewer plant, it was a five fifty, uh, dual cab with the, the dump, the spreader and plow on it, and then a three fifty with the plow and the spreader, or a, a plow.
And then you discussed with Mr. Barber, the pickup machinery, and if they do need pickup machinery and, uh, street tubing?
You know, we did not, uh, the specialty vehicles, this is something that, um, the specialty vehicles like the back truck, um, the, the bucket truck and a few of the other ones, I think those are ones that we may have to look at, how we want to handle that, uh, and such as, I did send him the specs on the, on the large dump trucks.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's something we've really broke down yet. This is, the twenty vehicles you're looking at here are the, the small vehicles, um, not in the large stuff. Uh, and it doesn't have, the bucket truck's not on here. Um, and like the, the two dump trucks we have at the highway garage, the dump trucks, the sewer plant, and the back truck.
And, and just to, that, tell it to them, but what we would do with that is we would just target the right cycle time, right? So it might not be a five-year, that would make sense for us to say, let's replace this every five years for a truck that size. With that much aftermarket being built into it?
Right.
So it might be an eight-year cycle based on the miles of steering, what is the resale of that type of truck? How much money are you putting in there for aftermarket? So everything does have a time period, it's just figuring out what's the right one for that. Uh, and that's where we, where we just focused on the, the, the twenty vehicles, the twenty-one vehicles here of that, you know, two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar opportunity for savings, versus what you're doing today versus maybe a different approach.
So, I, I was looking at the technology section of, of, on page four.
Yes, sir.
Getting away from the money for a moment.
Sure.
Yeah, true. I, I'm, I'm interested a little bit in the, it looks like you have a little cell phone mock-up still at the bottom, where I'm assuming the manager or the supervisor of the department, whoever that may be, can monitor where those vehicles are at any given time?
Sure.
So your, your software?
So there's two things that, you know, just like a maintenance program, do, did you want to go with our maintenance program, right? And utilize that versus keeping it an in-house maintenance thing? So there's a telematics program as well that interlines with that, that a lot of boroughs are using. Um, and that allows you to manage and figure out where your vehicles are at at all times. You can data track and see them at all times. Um, you can put geo-fencing into where, if they're going outside of a certain territory, Roger gets an alert. Um, you can put, it, it'll tell you how long the vehicle is idling. Um, it'll tell you if they're harsh braking, if they're speeding, if they're doing things they're not supposed to be doing in the vehicles, you would get alerts and emails sent to them. Uh, you can set the parameters however you would want, and yes, it would be available to you on the website to look at. And you would get data on that every single month. Um, and this is where insurances tend to start to come down, because you can prove safe driving patterns versus not, because it's there. This is also where you might get a phone call on the bell and say, my borough truck hit the side of the car, and then you might be able to pull up the GPS and say, well, that's impossible, because it was on the other side of the borough at the time your car got hit. We've dealt with that too, not saying that people are dishonest, but it's, uh, something that we've, uh, been able to help our purpose figure out as well. Um, so with that, we would have access to all of those. That little cell phone that you showed, um, that you're looking at, as well as, you know, his drivers need to get maintenance done, instead of them having to go to shop and explain a lot of stuff, they just show the phone, they scan the phone, they take the car, and then we help monitor everything else in between. Once it gets done, who gets alerted that there's a certain expense that needs to be done on that vehicle that's above our target threshold. Uh, we have over a few, a dozen, I would say, certified technicians that receive the phone calls from that shop, and we will help manage all of that process for you on the backend. They also will go to bid for you and say, this doesn't need to be done at that cost, which is what it should be, which is what several of the shops in your neighborhood are doing for that price, so that you're not being price gouged anywhere. Show you how to go to a one-off shop, not saying that the shops around here are dishonest, but we monitor all of that for you, um, to make sure that what needs to be done for the vehicle is being done. We also take that same data information and we would say, this vehicle right now should not have that problem. This should be a manufacturer warranty type situation, let's pull it out of the shop and send it back to the manufacturer, have that situation taken care of. We have a lot of action area that takes place with our goes low assistance and our warranties, making sure that the warranty companies are paying for falls, versus maybe you're not sure, and you get the shop to fix it because it needs to be done, and you gotta go back on the road. So all of that data collecting there that takes place on their website gives you that autonomy to do that.
Can I hear you say that was an add-on, uh, that we would take for us, did that come with the-
So telematics, telematics is an add-on, it's a feature. Um, as the cars coming up the line, the newer chip features that are out there, you have access to that data or not. Um, so it's whether or not you put a chip in or not, a, a plugin. But telematics would be an add-on feature in that regard, but that's some of the things that he's looking at, the, the tracking and geo-fencing and GPS, and we've talked a little bit about that too.
But the maintenance tracking and that stuff is included?
Maintenance tracking, a hundred percent is included in your maintenance package, that's part of your proposal, yes.
So you guys do maintenance work for, in places, then?
So it's up to you. Again, so if you have a certain place that you work within the community, and they're able to have all their integrated system put into there, and we're going to continue to go there. What you said, I'll be, I'll be snuck, just so you know, we have an enterprise branch in there, we're third, right? So we're already there, they have all of our equipment and data, so it would be really, I mean, it's, you would just pretty much say now your enterprise vehicle, and they know what to do.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Yeah, this is aside from the safety of your, is, with that geo-mashing, it's all good with GPS on the puzzle already, but if it's at all, getting used for discipline and reunion education, or that?
I understand that.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, police side of things could still, little different.
Yeah.
Are we going to report you?
Just to call off, I wasn't even thinking about you guys.
What's that? Yeah, I don't think that that's what the, the thought process was at all. It's good that you have that on there to do with it.
Just for protection for you and liability while, yeah, you have it.
You have the GPS to the county, so they, you can see where it was, or on.
Yeah, yeah, a little bit different, but it'd be the same, same exact philosophy.
Wow, there's a lot of information here, and, um, and I know-
Those were the clip notes, and I apologize.
I'm gonna ask that you guys, uh, you guys consider this, work with this, whenever you're going into budget time, that's when, when we try to talk about this a lot more in depth. Um, I can add this to the next meeting's agenda, and we can get the ball rolling from that end, or however you would like to look at it. Um, one of the things that we, I've heard from the others, like Eastpan's Borough Township, Gettysburg, Gettysburg. They like the way that they can plug one number into a budget, and they don't have to worry about that changing. Uh, it stays the same year after year after year. Um, they will work with, they will work with the select program, we have the car, the gas car.
Yeah.
So they can monitor the gas usage and everything like that. So we can roll that into this and just pay one check, one person, it's done and over with. Uh, the conversation come up about electric vehicles. They're making a lot of waves, noise about electric vehicles. At this point in time, the only one that we would have that would be an electric vehicle eligible would probably be the coastcar. But, um, that's, that's something to look at down the road. Uh, I mean, unless you guys want to experiment with.
They were. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you some floor of hockey in the eye with that.
Yeah, the eye down. But there's, there's options there, and this is going to open us up. And, and like you said, it's a partnership. We would be using their buying power to replace vehicles that we definitely need to replace. I mean, I do not want to get to Jamx this winter again, where we've got plow trucks sitting out here that can't run, uh, because they're broke down or something, and we have to wait until they can get to it. Um, and that's, that's something we're going to face. I mean, with the, the aging of our fleet. So, uh, consider it, look over this stuff. If you guys have any questions, email me, I will contact David right away, and we'll go from there, uh, and try to get something straight away for the next, uh, the next meeting in two weeks. And, uh, come back with some words, maybe some, a little harder numbers to go from there.
Just to share one last thing, if you don't mind. So as you're considering all that, and this isn't a plug for enterprise, this is just for the state of the union, where you guys are at with vehicles. The amount of delays, coddles, and shutdowns that's taken place, by the time you decide your budget and what you might want to move forward, a lot of those vehicle makes and models that you have that you would look at considering to replace are not available anymore. And there's only a certain amount for a, a several food product that has been allotted for governments to get. And where governments are already chomping at the bit, who's ever first in line is going to get those vehicles. So you still, even in making your decision to possibly find us, we're going to have to do some pivoting and figuring out how to navigate through COVID, on which we are successfully with folks. But just keep that in consideration, even when you're ready to move and pull the trigger. There's a lot of shutouts already shut off, a lot of cancellations that are already taking place for people who have already put in their, their orders. So just, uh, not to speed up your timetable, but, you know, that's definitely real and what's taking place right now in the market. So thank you guys for your time and letting me share with you everything about your lives and what's going on.
Thank you, David. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we get to that portion of our program where we, uh, entertain citizens' comments and requests. We ask that you limit your, uh, time to three minutes. Uh, if that's not enough time for you, there's an additional three minutes at the end of the meeting, where you may, uh, again, continue. And we try not to enter into, uh, debate. Um, someone from the borough will respond to your comments and requests in a timely manner, either someone from council or, or from staff. So realizing that, are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none and hearing none, we will move on. Correspondents.
I have one minute correspondence. Uh, we received a certified letter from Diver. Uh, they are under Pennsylvania Municipal Waste Management Regulations. They notified us, and this is something that I think Greg, myself, Curtis, and, uh, Justin Mendeski are going to have to discuss. The, uh, the place, it was, used to be Riz Paper out on Mulberry Drive. Uh, they were out there, they did Riz, uh, paper products, paper plates, paper towels, stuff like that. It has been converted to a unsold, unsellable food material and grocery retailer's processing facility. Uh, basically, what they do is they take, uh, unloaded, the facility, container unloaded from the trucks, inspected, then materials unloaded directly into a process hopper. Uh, they do produce bakery goods, deli, and hot food bar leftovers and packaged goods. So they've been processing salad products out there. It's like salad bars, vegetable matter. Uh, they're going to expand operations from a single, single unit into more. Uh, I did get a call from, uh, Attorney Andrews at McNeese. He is representing this company, and he wanted to make sure that we got this letter. Silver Spring Township is involved in this also because they are, that's where the sanitary are. That's their pump station, but sanitary comes to ours, um, in the art. So, um, there's some B and P questions here. Uh, we can comment on their license and stuff like that. Uh, that's where I'm going to get Greg and Curtis involved, uh, and Justin, uh, going forward with this. So that just came, uh, dated September first, but I didn't get it until Friday this past week. That's all I have.
All right. All right, conclusion of the minutes of the regular meeting of council, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Do I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pelman. Is there a second? Second, second from Mr. Anthony. So any discussion, additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing that, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
Thank you. All right, Andrew Andrew's first.
Uh, Mr. Friday, two, I have another one related to church road, which we'll talk about a little bit later on the agenda. Item number two, I had distributed to council further consideration as a result of some discussion at the authority meeting, a proposal we put together for the implementation of a, a GIS or geographic information system for the borough. Um, what that proposal sought to do is take account from the conversations about robbery and verse over the past couple of years to be able to institute this particular product. And I believe it's a smart map at the end of the day, and I'll be happy to provide a, a document, which I've been doing, if we can do it, you know, at some point in the future, to be able to show you what, what the results are. But it's a, a central repository for all your information. And I think, you know, part of the analogy that I use at the authority was, you know, at the end of the past, you have the forty-two years of information in its head. Um, it's, it's our goal as we move forward to get that forty-two years of information into a computer and to be able to access and classify it by location, uh, most prominently. So it has a far-reaching, uh, ability to, you know, document and, um, also be able to, to store that data for our sanitary sewer system, our store mark, our streets, our street signs, our, you know, weather conditions, all kinds of different things that can be stored and kept in one place. Um, these are out for use, they're really becoming more and more popular more so because the platforms on which they're driven use, use up the volume essentially, and have this, this hardware here at the borough. That's all along the way, you know, the advent of the cloud, and, um, you know, there's one major cloud market now, and, and really they, they have all this stuff, and you, you kind of buy into it. It's how it works. But you, you own the data, and that's a very important part. You know, there's always concern that, that whether you engage Penotti or anybody else to run this program, uh, or get it up running for you, you know, that data is yours. And in fact, we have data from about forty-two years ago on the sewer system that's sitting on a TV, not doing us any good right now, in, in a follow-up. So, you know, that's just one way to be able to get that stuff to a point that the guys can go out, they can document things in the field, probably with Lites, or, you know, probably with a rain sign or something like that. It goes right into that platform on an iPad now. Um, there's the ability to identify where you're at on the iPad because all that GPS type stuff is inherent to the devices we all carry now, and, um, be able to document all of this thing. So, you know, it really is where, where everybody's going. And we don't have to do that everybody, but the reason everybody's going that way is because it's a good thing. So, you know, to, to bring, uh, to bring our, you know, kind of data collection and repository up to what I would call current standards, you know, that's the direction of what we're looking to do. A lot of the work of our council, of course, is, you know, we're looking to implement that across both the borough and the authority. And, you know, there'd be a shared cost scenario that would have to have a conversation of how we do that. And I think there's also a desire to maybe use some of the, um, available funds we've got, um, to be able to do that. And that would be under Borough Council's discretion. But, you know, those are all discussions that we have. But, you know, the concept of the system is really to be able to, to look at a map, click on a smart link in the map, and be able to identify what, you know, what that, that element is. And people are thinking to, to a really, you know, high-level degree, like, um, you know, lower marrying tax, people willing to go to the GIS and actually click on where your puddles are at, and send a direct message to the borough manager, Sir Roger Loveback. Um, you know, so anybody that I would talk to about that feature would then, would absolutely not, you know, I mean, um, you know, it, it's really as crazy a town as we want to get with it in customer market. But there's a very basic approach here. You know, there's like kind of three levels. We presented the authority, getting our feet wet, you know, and then introducing some of these data collection, uh, components where we, we get some hardware, some iPads, to be able to use this stuff in the field. And, you know, I think given where we are with respect to changing personnel, and, and, you know, we're the borough in general, that, you know, now's the time to strike with our own side and, and start to really get this information into a system like that. So, um, so, I thought that for you guys, well, obviously, so just getting back to things, but let me get that distributed. So once again, there's a future conversation to be had about, about the implementation, sharing about those costs, uh, and go from there. So. Any questions online? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, community liaison reports, downtown partnership, Mrs. Arington?
Um, so there's some big stuff coming up. So September eighteenth, uh, will be the demolition of the Law Hut in McCannixburg, for the first step in, um, the Renaissance Project, followed by the Wine Block, which I think is, well, just at the time, that you can buy your wine block, it is now, um.
It's the same there.
Fine. It's called the Vibe.
I think building up on that thing.
Well, again, it's like flowing it up, hard, hard, yeah. But there, there will be troubles and stuff, so please, I'll, I'll go.
We actually, we're going to make the replacement later.
No, no, Gary. We're, uh, we're going to be heading with cameras.
We're going to, we're going to, we're sure.
Yeah. So, um, we're excited to get back to golf. The other thing that's going on right now is if you go down to Glit Soap, um, you can purchase a bar of soap for the Renaissance Project, and the proceeds do go back to the Renaissance Project. So if you haven't been down to Glit Soap, it's a great excuse to go down there and get a couple of bars of soap. They're, they're pretty awesome down there. And I think that's all.
Any questions for Mrs. Arington? Okay, there are no, Mr. Pelman, library?
Okay, there is a dining out this month that benefits the, uh, Friends of the McCannixburg Library. Uh, it is at the Outback at the Capital City Mall location, twelve oh one Lower Allen Drive. It's on Wednesday, September fifteenth, from four to nine. And, uh, of course, as usual, with these dining outs, a portion of the money made from the food does go to the Friends of the Library. And you must bring a flyer, or you can download one of them on the computer or pick one up at the library itself. Uh, Little Theater in McCannixburg tomorrow night, there's a performance of the play, The Importance of Being Earnest, that will benefit Friends of the McCannixburg Library. The tickets are probably sold out at this point, but yes, of like last week, there were still a few left. They're eighteen dollars a piece. Um, the library's online auction, uh, is this month. The preview is the thirteenth of September to the seventeenth of September. You can look over the things that are offered for sale, uh, or bid on rather. Um, the auction itself runs from the eighteenth to the twenty-sixth, and pick up a things that you might have, uh, uh, bid on. If you are the top bidder, obviously, would be September thirtieth to October second. There are more than four hundred items that they're auctioning off that include things like tools, clothing, blankets, furniture, art, themed baskets, and gift cards. Uh, the trivia at home this, this month, it's Saturday, September twenty-fifth, from six to eight via Zoom. You can reg, you must register online, and the, uh, topic of this trivia at home contest is Schitt's Creek. The, uh, television series that, uh, I watched, but I probably can't remember not to even bother. Well, participating. Uh, and also, the library must say they're lengthening their hours now, starting September eleventh and twelfth for the weekend. They had, uh, they had, uh, less than the amount of hours they were over, open over the weekend earlier this year. Now Saturdays will be open from ten to five, and Sunday one to five. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions? Uh, Museum Association, of course, the big thing is you should have received your invitation to the, uh, ribbon cutting ceremony, I'm told now, for the, um, Gardens area and the two-hundred-twentieth year celebration of the existence of the tavern. That's all taking place on the twenty-fifth, beginning, the ceremony begins at ten AM, and there will be various, uh, crafters, a call of crafters, for lack of a better word. We have, uh, um, all kinds of colonial-type demonstrations going on throughout the day. People will be in period costumes, uh, there'll be some outdoor cooking, and, uh, all kinds of very interesting things going on throughout the day. So if you're around, uh, please stop in, say hello, and be part of the, the big celebration. And that's all I have. Downtown Board of Service Manager, about to hear it.
Can anyone hear everyone? Sorry, I don't have copies of my report. Could I mark the death of our copier? So I emailed you that, and I'll be updating it, of course, for the meeting next week of the Downtown McCannixburg Partnership, and I'll make sure you get that updated report as well. But before that happens, I printed one out in black and white in my little printer. Uh, under About Face, I'm working with C.J. Mercer. C.J. and her husband own Main Street Laundromat. And that's what I've been with them for a couple of years, about the storefront there where there's not a bit of paint left, so you can just see raw wood on all of the trim and the panels and so forth. Some problems with the glass, some leakage there. The signage is really ancient and doesn't work. And it's on one of the lovely ribbed panels like we used to have at Cardinal Colors before we did that project. So we are working on a project there to get new signage and correct all of those. And it's, in addition to painting the entire building, which is that a project we've been looking at for a number of years too, I meet with the owners of that building, the vendors tomorrow morning, um, to explain to them how to get bids for the work and so forth. It'll be up to four colors. We won't be doing the Chef de Crepe or the Fantastic storefronts because those were painted, and that's what they want. But Main Street Laundry will be included in that, as well as the, uh, salon in the back. All sides of the building, all floors of the building will be done. That's part of a Cumberland Street View facade grant and About Face grants for the building and storefronts, the retail unit. So that's very good news. Kate Yost is the new owner of Nybert Barbershop. That's good news, too. So I thought he was making his way from East Main Street, from Invisors, to, uh, North Market Street. He bought the business. Troy DeRica is retiring the end of this month. And the sale may be out by now already. Ben's Crab Pot Place, open, I don't know yet. Um, that's a practice store from Jojo's on the same side of, of West Moon Street. This gentleman wants to have a business on Walnut Street in Harrisburg. I'm working with an attorney that's looking for a downtown office. This is a new law practice. And I'm working with a nonprofit that's interested in about four, six thousand square feet of space for warehousing and fulfillment services, could be downtown or off of downtown. Uh, I continue to work with a buyer interest for the Ritter's Two Value Hardware Real Estate. That's going very well. As we put together financing for that, I expect to have more information on that in the coming weeks. In addition to all of the events going on with the Museum Association and the Downtown McCannixburg Partnership, we do have a Pennsylvania Tea Festival. This year didn't last year because of COVID. That's the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth at Rosemary House in Sweet Remembrance, as those two businesses take care of that each year. Um, I put a picture in here of the event that we had when we did the kickoff of the demolition at two oh three Main Street. And I'm delighted to see, and looking at the photo, how many of you were there? I hope you all attend, uh, the events, both to read the work story, Law Hut, as well as to mark the completion of not only the gardens, but I'm praying the easement by that date as well, with the signatures on that. Our community development block grants, those are federal funds that come to the Redevelopment Authority. That timeline for those is typically announced in July, submitted in September, hear about it in November. We're changing that program year to coincide with everybody else's fiscal year, your fiscal year. So there won't be, uh, solicitation for those until winter twenty twenty-two. And I'll keep you updated as to what's going on there. We have monies remaining, a lot of monies remaining for the COVID-related rental assistance program. That's for tenants and for landlords, so it's worth your while to look into that. Go to the Calhoun County Housing and Redevelopment Authority website, CCHRA dot com, and see if you qualify or not, and how to utilize those funds specifically designed for tenants and landlords. That's what I have. Anything for me?
So Becca, how long are those funds available for tenants and landlords?
I believe until they run out, but I, but I can't, because it's a federal program, I can't predict what might, uh, what might happen there. But we have them, they're available, and despite what happened with the, what happened with the moratorium, that did not impact this program. These are still available, I'll come today. Thank you.
Good to know. Thank you. All right. Are there any additions to the agenda? You have spoken to the possibility?
Yes, sir, I have one. Uh, discussion, possible action on the installation of a pollinator bird at the locations in the memo, both indicated in the memo dated nine three twenty twenty-one.
So move. All right, so move by Mr. Anthony, second by Mrs. Arington. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the other one that's been added to the agenda. All right, we now need a motion to approve the agenda with the addition. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Pelman, second. Mr. Anthony, second to that. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing that, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the agenda is approved. Action items before Borough Council, Mr. Sazursky.
Action item before Borough Council for September seventh, twenty twenty-one. Discussion and action on conditional use application for eleven oh six, eleven oh eight Simpson Street for automobile dealership use. And I have Mr. Cassidy's motion if council so wishes.
So move. Second, there's been properly moved, and second, Mr. Anthony with the, uh, initial motion there. I believe it's from the second. So any further discussion on the issue?
I have somebody who lives right near this, uh, property. I'm happy to see that somebody, somebody is doing something with this.
Yeah. All right, hearing no other discussion, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And then the motion tags. Mrs. Sazursky, I presume you're going to notify, Mr. Sayad?
Yes, um, and Mr. Cassidy, vote.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item.
Discussion and action on church road repairs is outlined in the Silver Spring Township memo dated eight nineteen twenty-one. Cost of the evening was good. That was attachment one. Silver Spring Township has met. Since they sent that memo, uh, they want to look at different ways to do that. If it was council's wishes, we could table this until another time. The township supervisors agree with Greg and I, so to speak, that this is a very dirty band-aid, and you wouldn't want to put one on a brushburn, one on a church road.
Well, that answers the questions I asked. Uh, is somebody looking to entertain a motion to public motion to table? Thank you. Been a motion to table, it's not required. Second, um, but, uh, Mrs. Martin, go ahead.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And that item is tabled. It'll turn in minutes.
Discussion and action for approval of the Liberty River Telecom, which can fly onto the football stadium on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, at approximately seven oh five PM. That was attachment two.
Am I hearing a motion?
Please, the motion.
The mayor makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say yes.
Mrs. Arington, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And motion tags. Where are your earplugs that night?
Uh, it will be in Memorial, it will be on the baseball field before that football game. So that if you want to see it up close personally, you can actually see it up close in person. Uh, discussion and continuation of street sweeping in the borough and potential changes to the procedures.
And before we enter into this discussion, I'd like to try to simplify this for everybody, uh, if you'll allow me. I think we have basically two questions here. If we don't answer the first one, there's no sense going to the second one. But the first one, the first question we need to discuss as council is, do we want to continue street sweeping in Borough McCannixburg? Yes or no? And then we'll qualify that with the second question. So I'm open to hearing any comments. Is, is this the area of, uh, street sweeping?
Well, let's, let's also qualify what we're talking about in terms of street sweeping. They would be doing street sweeping in terms of MS four, although we could, we could use equipment like mechanical sweaters that we, it depends on how often we run it, I guess. I mean, that, yeah. It depends on all of that. So, so what we could really do here is only for, to pick up debris. And I think that, at least from my perspective, the program worked in that it picked up a hundred and thirty tons of debris off the roads, and that in itself does have some positive effect on our streets and our infrastructure and keeping the term out of storm sewers and the maintenance and cleaning and cost that goes into that. So there is benefit to street sweeping, not only in the, it is a, you know, on the aesthetic appeal, but in the, in the infrastructure and wear and tear on roads. Um, so just something to think about in the continuation of the program.
I would question why we, we wouldn't street sweep. I, I would like to hear the argument to stop street sweeping.
Because it, well, we're shifting money from the authority over to the borough budget, so I'd like to understand what that's going to cost us.
That's question two.
Well, it's question one, if I need to know how much it's going to be before I decide I want to.
Do you want to do it, and then we'll figure out whether we can do it or not, is the way I'm looking at it. Because there's so many ramifications if we get into the cost and who's paying it and all that. If we're in favor of doing it, then we have to figure out a way to pay for it. And if we can't, then we can't do it. That's, that's what I'm, I'm trying to simplify this instead of getting it all out of color. It sounds like we want to with certain, it doesn't cost us very much.
I think also the cost will, you know, we could get into a discussion of cost in terms of how frequently of how much we want to sleep, you know, do we. So the options, do we want to continue with something like a contractual arrangement where you sleep, you know, twice a month or once a month? Or do you go to, uh, rent, you know, leased piece of equipment, where you have borough personnel running the, the leased sleeper?
That's going to be my question.
That's going to be my question.
Or do you? So, you know, I think we have to decide as a council first, do we want street sweeping? To how often do we want or need street sweeping? And then we can go have a further discussion on that. I think.
Well, I still go back to the point that it does us no good if people don't know the street sweeping schedule. So I think that I'll go back to, there's a pile of dirt in front of my house because my neighbors have work trucks, and they cannot get around those work trucks to sweep. So the debris almost goes up to the top of my sidewalk. And to me, there's no sense in street sweeping if we don't have a procedure that works. Before, we can even crunch the numbers, but the debris that I think is left behind by not street sweeping is going to have more negative effects on the way our town looks, the slimminess of it, the way on the roads, and our water. So I think we need to probably talk about, go back to the basics with the street sweeping. Because I do not believe that an email or Facebook worked. Like, I hate signs, but when we had a sign timed that people could see, I think it makes a big difference. And I don't mind if we reduce it, and I don't have to move my car quite as often, but if people don't know to move their car and we're just going around it, it's not helping the debris.
Yeah, and I do agree, we had that conversation on the authority, and it was a little bit complicated with the authority because the authority didn't have ordinance power, we didn't have to come to council, so it was a little bit more complicated that way. But it's also, we did have a schedule, it was advertised, it was put out there in some degree. It did not, it did not work. It was not, it was not put out there widely enough that would be, that would make people get off the street. And you can have signs, but the only reason, you know, only they're going to get people to move their cars is if you enforce the sign. So there's, there's a lot of layers to that. And do we want to just sign downtown, or do we want to sign the entire borough? You know, and that's a, a complicated and difficult question. And it's also a costly one, when you've taken the consideration, like the material, the labor, and to do all of that. So it's, that from that perspective, it was a difficult decision when we, I mean, the way we did it, we did pick up a lot of material from the roads. Did, was it perfect? Now, did it achieve some level towards MS4? It did, but it wasn't for the authority, it wasn't cost effective. So we could look at continuing, uh, street sweeping. I'm not sure at what degree council wants to go.
Do we not, would the authority take over what the tonnage was of sweeping? Is there any way to quantify that?
Yeah, I think Greg's report that was included in your package had that, what the total was. I think it was, I think Councilman Miller was right, it was around 130 tons, I want to say.
Here's the question to the floor.
Before.
Yeah, I think it was before. We do have some records I remember from years past that we tried to dig up as to what that, that amount was. Have you been finding?
I can look at the cost.
We did not sweep for two years.
Yeah, that matter. And I don't really even look at the cost, because really, we didn't have a, like, it wasn't easy to contract to say, hey, this is the contract value, you know what I mean? There's cost areas, a lot of personnel.
Sure, yeah, I think it would be very difficult, because you'd have to look at how often the machine was run. I don't think we have those records.
No.
So are we looking at, so there's a lot of possibilities for this. So we're looking at possible leasing, purchasing, using old equipment?
We don't have, we don't have.
We don't have the old equipment. So leasing, purchasing new equipment, so there's.
Well, contract. Well, it appears that we all are in the same camp, but we would like to see sweeping continue. It's just how we do that would be the next question.
Yeah, well, I think without agreeing, I think you can't agree until you have some sort of money to be able to say yes or no, because I think the cost in which it is.
All right, well, we're at that point.
Is it reasonable, I mean, I don't know, the question is, what would this current contractor charge us differently than they charged the borough?
I.
Did you don't reach out to him?
I did reach out to him. He did say that there would be a cost increase due to the complexity of working in town. I do know that some of the other contractors I talked to that tried to get a, a sense of their opinion of this, the one guy out of Carlisle, uh, once that he wouldn't contract to do work in a borough, and he wouldn't touch a borough for less than 175,000 a year. Particularly, he's from Mechanicsburg.
Well, I don't think you can say, I don't think you can say that without going out to bid.
We have to rock a bit, you're right, to do that. That was a, was about a two and a half month process on, and, and this is the time here where we do have the time to do that now. Unfortunately, we're also sitting at budget time too. A new machine, you're looking at probably, if we were a purchase machine, uh, purchase price for a decent machine that's going to last, you're probably looking in the neighborhood of 275 to 350,000 dollars. That is not the little ones that we had in relief season last year. These are bigger machines. This is one of the ones that Vortec brought as a demonstrator when the authority was looking at those machines. It had a bigger hopper, it is a combination mechanical and vacuum, so, and it has a wider throat and a bigger reach than what those little machines were that we had. So it has some potential to it. I have not reached out to Vortec to find out if they'd be interested in, in coming in and talking to us, but there are companies out there that, that have machines that are decent, and their, the technology's getting better and better, so they're getting smaller and they'll work better on our smaller streets.
So we, we could get Acmis for once a month, twice a month, you know, that.
I will, I will reach out to, potentially, SCA or however you want to do this and go forward from there.
I would reach out to SCA, ask them how much they would charge us to continue our current contract. I mean, this is assuming a payment is payable.
Yeah.
Continue our current contract at the frequency of two ti, at twice a month, and then what they would, what they would get for once a month, if they would, uh, be amenable to that because of the frequency of it.
Right.
And then, you know, that would give us an idea from that end, and then we could decide whether or not we want to go out to bid again and get, we could, because we could use the template of the, that it wouldn't take as long to develop all the materials that, like the authority used. You don't have all that material.
I personally would not hire that company to do work for Commerce and Borough ever again, based on their track record that they had with us authority. They didn't live up to the contract, they had violations in the contract in the first month, they didn't follow the schedule that you created. They didn't do anything that you're supposed to do. Frankly, we should have never paid them. But the authority went ahead and did pay them. That's why I wanted to separate this discussion.
Well, my question, why did, I know we've, since sold our street sweeping equipment on, yeah, whatever, I probably need to, whatever, but why were they discontinued the first time before, pre MS4? Was it just like a logistics issue or accident? I know, I mean, we had a street sweeper.
It was discontinued on a previous borough manager's word that it would cost too much to repair the machine constantly, and it was easier to let it sit. At least that was the, well, we're not now reading anywhere, but that is what was told to me by the gentleman that is no longer at the Highway Department.
Well, I just don't mind any situation where we have it and just let it sit again, and then, well, oh, well, it's not going to work, you know? So I want to make sure if we're, if we're committed to this, like, we want, I want to make the investment in doing it.
Because it was the repairs, right, that kept it sitting? That, that means, that's the rumor, but.
Well, and to be honest with you, the first one we sold it to, took it over, had the correct motor put on, the vacuum head, and the thing actually works the way it's supposed to now. And he's running it on job sites, collecting a lot more debris than what he ever, whatever collected here on the streets.
As far as the authority's process for, when we determined, when we went through this and determined what direction we wanted to go with, regardless of whether we continued with that contractor or another contractor, it was helpful to look at all options, contract, leasing, and purchase. It was helpful to look at all that and have the numbers for each of those when we made that decision.
I agree. I don't think there's, but I think the general consensus would be, yes, we want to street sweep, but I think we need to have something in front of us to be able to move forward with it.
Yeah, I agree.
Is it something that we can work on? I know it's probably a lot more work than I think.
You know, the rest of the question, does the authority have some responsibility towards street sweeping, or is it going to dump all on the borough? Because when we clean the streets, we are reducing the amount of oil that's going to, or debris that's going to storm drains. So it does affect the authority, and I think the authority should be partnering with the borough on whatever we do, whether it is, whether we use a company to come in, or whether we purchase our own and hire a person to drive it. Because there are implications, I think, from the authority's side that, that, that are part of this farmer's field if we sweep streets. So that's another issue that I think we need to look into.
I think going back to the original conversation with the authority, you know, it was clearly not that they could use it as a BME that was part of our introduction program. So, you know, I think that's a, I think everybody's lose on that, to the extent that it's a terrible cost, or to the extent that, correct, if you're stepping up on the street, you're not having to get out of the storm drain, you know, so there's a quantize cost savings there. And just part of the, the general maintenance of our storm sewer system, it benefits us as well. How that's quantifiable, impossible, you know what I mean? But that would just be, have to be a conversation to be had, so.
I would agree with that, really, I'm going to, fifty-fifty, sixty-forty, forty-sixty, whatever you said, you know?
Different world, yeah.
All right, so if I can make a suggestion, I can gather the information as far as lease purchase and, and due cost estimates on how much it would cost to have someone drive it per day, and then we can figure out a schedule from there as to what the frequency is that you want the borough swept. Do we want to do it twice in the beginning of the year and once at the end of the year? How we want to, you know, I mean, there, there's a myriad of options. But if I give you a daily breakdown, would that be a, you would know what they could get done. They're going to get, we have 27 miles of road in the borough, 67 curb miles, or 65 curb miles of road that's sweepable. I think that's how we kind of broke it down in that contract when I, I broke all that out. So there's forty, there's thirty, 22 miles of state road, curb miles. So we can break that down per curb mile, figure that out all the way through and work out. I will get some prices, some cost estimates from various manufacturers, CoStar manufacturer for options on machines, just so that we can have that to work with, and then we can work from a contractor's side to get cost estimates of what they might charge for this without going out officially to bid.
And that's just an afterthought, if we are not going to use the signs for street sweeping, can we please have them removed?
We will have them removed, but that's, that's going to be another determination down the road. Do we, do, where is the enforcement level that you want to be at with that? I know that could turn into another snow round conversation also, so.
I love it.
Let's figure out, there's, there's some, I'll give you information, we can talk about it a little bit more at depth, because we have a little bit of time before we're going to start sweeping again. I think they're coming back next week, their last sweep is for the authority. So, all right, I'll give some numbers from, from SCA, just to be on the safe side and go from there.
I, I will, I should have tabled this on the table.
And there's no, there's no action, there's no discussion, no discussion, so we don't have a motion. Thank you. Next item, please.
Discussion and action to approve the minimum municipal obligation for the Police Pension Fund for 2022, any amount of $207,732.
So moved. Been moved by Mr. Anthony, is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action to approve the minimum municipal obligation for the Non-Uniform Defined Benefit Pension Fund for 2022 in the amount of $264,523.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton, is there a second?
Four seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Any discussion? Any comments? Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action to approve the minimum municipal obligation for the Non-Uniform Defined Contribution Pension Fund for 2022 in the amount of $207,732.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton, is there a second?
Four seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Pelman. Any discussion? Hearing no, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item.
Discussion and action on a proposal from Hamilton-Muster for auditing services for the Borough Mechanicsburg et cetera.
I'll lay it down, I'll share. Thank you, Mr. Pelman, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. Any discussion?
Could you give us some background on this, Pelman, and, yeah?
They are the authority's auditor. They screened out to us and asked if we would accept the proposal a couple of years, probably about a year, year or so ago. There was some issues with Trout, who is our, this borough auditor. They are lengthening out, they basically keep changing the goalposts. One year they tell us they want us to do these things for the authority, or the swimming pool, and then the next thing, they want everything redone. Glenda's completely rechanged the books to try to match that, to try to keep comments and stuff down on their, their reports. This has gone back to the very beginning with Trout, and Hamilton-Muster emailed me, Nick from Hamilton-Muster emailed me, asked if I would like to see a proposal for the borough fund, since they've done them before, and I said I, he could send it over, we could look at it, and it was unsolicited, so, put it on the, he asked if we could put it on the council agenda, if they would look at it, and that's basically where we stand right now.
Who's the one who ran that on Trout?
We're only a year to go.
Year to go. What was the cost of Trout right now?
I have to look it up, to be honest with you. I know it was, it was, the, the three-year extension, each one was a little bit higher than the others, so.
Isn't that, isn't this one that we have to go out and bid for?
No, it's a professional service.
So do we know if this is cheaper at this specific?
Their numbers are usually cheaper because they're very low.
Okay, we do have a motion on the table that's been perfectly seconded. Is there any other discussion? Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, the one we've all been waiting for. Discussion and action. No, this is not, I don't know if I even want to add, sorry, you're getting, I'm coming at a, wait for thinking, I guess.
Discussion and action on the applications for Downtown Mechanicsburg Partnership to have a banner hung over the Main Street at Cheston Street from September 8th until October 8th, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Is there any discussion? Well, I'm sorry, September 8th is tomorrow.
We did not have the application for this. I, this, this was the last minute edition Friday morning.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing no, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion approved and the banner over. Thank you.
Second item. Discussion and action to approve the special events permanent application for the Rock Cat Foundation. Discussion and action to approve the special events permanent application for the Rockcat Foundation for a five-year run memorial park on cross, cross-country course on Friday, November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, beginning at nine AM and ending at noon. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Pelman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. And now. For the item we've all been waiting for. Discussion and action to set the date and time for trick or treat in the Borough of McCannsburg. I'll make that move. So much crap for that, do we make the motion? The motion should have the date, time. We need to have a date. We have to set a date. The action needs to set the date, so, and, we'll, we'll, and litter our neighbors for profession.
So I think they're mixed by.
They are mixed by, yes.
And I'm a traditionalist that our Thursday is always what I think makes sense for the borough. But I know that Halloween happens to fall on Sunday, so there has been some buzz about that. Um, but I would defer to the street department and ask you what they feel is the most safest.
Financial, strip with financial side of you, uh, the twenty-eighth is the week where Thursday's our heavy day. Everybody works on Thursdays. Sunday is, um, not a heavy day for us. It's a day off for most people and just looking at the schedule, we already have an overtime shift for Sunday. So it required bringing more people in to cover for, uh, trick or treat on that Sunday evening. Um, the concern is, is that you're going to bring, no matter what date you set it, if your neighbors have different dates, you're bringing more people in. We have more people on Thursday already.
Unfortunately, in his last show, we tried to defer to our neighbors and then they all had rain dates and we do not believe in rain dates in the borough. So it got all switched, um, and that was the problem. So I propose that, um, to say it would be fiscally conservative and honoring my tradition, the Thursday. Um, that's what I would prefer, um, and also a consideration for rain dates. For all the moms that get mad at us for not setting rain dates.
You mean for Thursday, right?
For Thursday, yeah.
The twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth.
I'm also agreeable with that. I don't believe in rain dates though because I, I feel like that's just trying to be, well, Halloween and rain date is, is, uh, October thirty-first, i- is, and I don't have a trick or treat in my memory. Another argument from the rest of the gallery.
I don't see it. We're fighting shows there. I want the rain date on Thursday. What happened with the hurricane that hit those kids?
If that's, if that's a miracle, uh, later, and we, and we're just covering, I bet I heard of. Okay, okay, I think that's.
Then it's a valid argument. What's that? Do you have any?
I mean, I, I would like to have it on the thirty-first, but Lieutenant Curtis, which argument makes a lot of sense to me.
I'll just second it.
I'm, I'm going to add more, 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 if we're safe when we're ready, I'm going to anyway.
John?
Yeah, good. I, I would have gone with the thirty-first too, but, um.
Yeah, just, just make sure, uh, if you would be on the thirty-first, we would bring people in, but it's going to be all on overtime, whereas the twenty-eighth will be all straight up.
So I'd be in favor of the twenty-eighth. No reason.
All right, so, Mrs. Agerton, you were going to entertain a motion, I believe.
Yes, I'm.
I hear some sentiment against a rain date, so.
I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to.
If you have made your motion, I'm not trying to influence your motion here.
So this is what I do, so we can be formal, but I'm still. So I will propose that we go with the Thursday for the trick or treat, no rain date.
Fourth. Fourth.
Is it the fourth?
Yes, third.
Oh, my God. I mean, the fourth, I'm, I'm social worker, I'm not.
I think it was on six to eight, so October twenty-eighth.
Six to eight, I'm sorry.
Six to eight PM. That is the motion. All second. And Mr. Pelman, second, Mr. Martin. Is there any further discussion?
If I take the place.
Hearing none?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
The motion carries. You will be having trick or treats on the twenty eighth of September. The authority has provided extra P and B. That will repost it everywhere. I'm sure it'll be major. I'm trying to, uh, some might do for the. I think I'm on Facebook page now. We did have an additional item that was, we didn't do it yet, sir. Oh, I thought we did that last night. Discussion and action on expenditures from all funds for a period beginning August first, twenty twenty-one through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, there is listed below. So moved. The move? Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Pelman. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the fellows, thanks. Thank you, thank you. Now the additional item, please, sir. Discussion and po- and action on the installation of a pollinator garden at the locations in the memo dated nine, three, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. Is there a second? So, is that, who was that? Thank you, John. Mr. Anthony, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Okay, we've come to that time of our, uh, bracket for any citizens' comments? Have there been any additional citizens' comments at this time?
Mark Stone, Philly, North Florida Street. Just one question. Uh, if I remember right, us needing, um, Borough Mechanics to reimburse Hampton Township for paving on Norway Street between Main and Finsel Street. Why reimburse Hampton Township on work that hasn't happened to be completed yet?
We haven't reimbursed it yet. It's when we get the invoice.
Well, it says reimburse Hampton Township for it.
It was to reimburse.
Oh, okay, that's not what the study in the minutes.
Oh.
Okay, I just wanted to make, clear that up. I just wanted to, because it said reimburse and I said, why would we reimburse, because the work has not been completed yet? So I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, before we get to the end of the meeting, I neglected to mention that we did have an executive session following our last council meeting. Uh, on an item with personnel, there was no action taken at that time. Is there any other business? Mrs. Martin?
No.
Mr. Sazowski? Two quick things. Um, I did receive the plans and the specifications for garage door repairs in back. Uh, I'm going to put together a bid package and put that out. Uh, we're stealing the twelve and fifteen thousand dollar range for repairs of the garage door back here. It includes a new steel beam, uh, and reworking a lot of the concrete block above the, the door before we get the door back in, in, uh, service. So, um, those will be coming out hopefully soon to get those out so I can price it as what the repairs are going to cost. Um, the other thing is, we, last Monday, the county commissioners had an advisory board meeting, uh, with the municipal managers and a few other ones from the area. Uh, one of the things that was discussed at that meeting was the tolling of Interstate eighty-three bridge across the, the Southland River. There are a lot of points that were brought out. Um, uh, they officially only contacted the four municipalities along the river. Uh, Werlingberg, Shermanstown, or Werlingberg, uh, Lemoine, uh, Inola and, uh, New Cumberland were the only municipalities they contacted. They did reach out a little bit to Lower Allen, but not a, a lot. Uh, the county, uh, Gene Fosch, as a matter of fact, is the one that, uh, attended the meeting, uh, brought up that this is not just going to impact them. It's going to impact all of us, Hampton Township, uh, and myself spoke up about how, uh, accidents on eighty-one affect traffic in the Borough of McCannsburg, where alone Hampton Township. So, um, the letter that I distributed earlier tonight is a letter that the managers and the commissioners want to send to Penda uh, with our signatures on it. Kirk Stone from the planning commission is the one that drafted up the letter so far with all our concerns on it. And, uh, would like to know, one, who in the borough would be the signatory on it if you choose to go along with the letter as it was written? Um, so if we can get that, review that. He just sent these out this morning. We can review that, um, for next meeting. Uh, I'll get it back to Kirk and, uh, we can get it sent over to Penda. That's all I have. Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony?
We've talked about it a couple of times. Just a reminder to join us for the groundbreaking on September eighteen at Market and Main. Where we're going to be putting shelves in the ground symbolically to tear down the building.
Wonderful, thank you.
Had a lovely meeting.
Uh, just following up on Mr. Stone's comment, I did drive down Norway Street the other day and that thought had crossed my mind. When is the street going to be taped? Do we know?
It was, mid-September is when we were told, so we'll probably see the invoice towards the end of September.
Okay. So, anything?
Thank you.
Um, the new football stadium looks beautiful and glad to see everyone down there. Glad that they were able to get that. My question is, will we approve that? I did believe that we were supposed to have access to a bathroom.
We do.
The fence, did they open it up? Okay, but I found that the other day I couldn't get to the bathroom.
It's done.
Okay.
It's fine. There's, there's no lock on the, on, on gate currently that we will, I think we had determined the time of opening and closing that. And I think Roger's working on. Yeah. We're, we're, only one of those doors inside that cage is unlocked. Right. A single bathroom, which is what we had asked for.
Perfect. I, when I was down there, I couldn't find my way in, so.
Yeah, I, I've got to get Victor to go out there to take a look at that so that we can, because power's in there that we can tap it very often. We can do an automatic lock on that. Uh, the, the gate outside, when there's a football game, they'll be locking that, our gate, and then opening their gate on the inside. Yeah, it was like that Friday night at the game.
It's a beautiful addition to our park, so I'm grateful to have it.
Yep. Anything else?
Just done it.
Mr. Regalke?
No, sir.
Any other?
Just want to thank all of our departments for their work last week with the remnants of hurricane Ida. Uh, other than the issue of one Allen Dale road, I think it was Allen Dale Road, sorry.
Allen Dale that way.
Yeah. Other than that issue and, uh, heard of one individual with a flooded basement and it, it went pretty well. Which is much better than five other municipalities and stuff.
For what? Thank you. Ted Curtis?
Uh, just two things and things were discussed. Uh, the enemy talked about the TIS mapping thing and kind of making a joke about sending problem spots to Roger through EDO. That would actually be very helpful for us, police department wise, um, to the borough manager and also other departments, you know, regarding site business problems. I can think of a thousand ways, honestly, that we could use that easily for from a police department, communication back and forth. Uh, and as a strength, we can go, one thing I would echo is a sign if you take it down, if you're not going to follow the schedule. There's still some people moving in and out of town that, you know, don't know whether it's being enforced or not and.